Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order at the sound of my gavel. Uh, we're gonna ask Gerald Sting to do the invocation, please, this morning, this evening. This is the, uh, meeting of the Board of Supervisors, August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at five P. M., and Sly will ask you to do the pledge.
Thanks Supervisor Banks. Before I pray though, we'd like to send our condolences to Supervisor Baxter for the death of his brother. Uh, it's always sad and, uh, we hate to report that today, but we also want to just keep him in our prayers and also our administrator as well has been out a couple of weeks, Shelton Vance. Uh, we want to continue to lift him up in prayer as well and many others that are dealing with COVID and, and other issues as well, so let us pray. Father Lord, we just thank you for the day, Lord. Uh, you asked us to personally lift up petitions, Lord, and, and at this point, uh, we'd like to lift up Supervisor Baxter and his family, Lord, as they're going through the situation they're going through at this, at this time, Lord. We just ask that your heel in hand and would be, would continue to be on them as a family, Lord, that, uh, surround and protect them, Lord, and, and continue to let them know that you continue to be there for them. Father, we pray for, uh, our administrator Shelton as well, Lord, as he is, uh, working through, uh, a situation with COVID, Lord. We just ask that, uh, your hand would be upon him as well, Lord, as he, uh, works through, uh, works through that situation as well. But Father, uh, thank you for Madison County, Lord. We just thank you for the many opportunities that we have here, Madison County, Lord, to continue to work and continue to improve. But Father, we just thank you for who you are and for what you do in our lives, Lord, and being our Savior, Lord, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, okay. Oh, huh. You're supposed to say those minutes. Okay, um, approval of the board minutes for August second, two thousand and twenty-one.
Yes, Mr. President, you should have said board minutes before you. I would ask if there are no changes to please approve said minutes.
Motion.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All approve. Okay, thank you. Um, concerned citizens, uh, we have Chris, Chris Jones on the list.
Um, we have one Supervisor Banks that signed up outside, Mr. Scott Shoemaker.
Okay.
He's in here.
He's here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let him come to speak before us.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, I am here about a road abandonment, uh, we're a neighborhood that we're developing. Um, I'm here representing Rand's LLC. We'd like to formally request the board approve and initiate the process for the abandonment of Liberia Lane, an existing public road connected to Catlet Road within the subdivision of Autumn Crest. Uh, access to the adjoining properties to the west will all be accessed by Autumn Drive. Um, the new constructed public street is Autumn Crest. Um, and that's what I was told to come before you.
That's the road that used to go to Falls Cross. It would have abandoned.
That's right, that's the new road that, that we took in as far as to be a part of Autumn Crest.
Okay, good, good. Okay, I make a motion that we-
Mr. Chairman, oh, there's a statute of process for abandoning.
Yeah. Well, I was gonna make the motion that we ask our attorney to look into it, make, and make sure that we abandoned it properly.
You gotta, you gotta publish it two weeks and then you have a hearing.
Mm-hmm. No problem.
And we just wanted to go ahead and start that process.
That's what we wanna do, is start the process. That's, that's what he had asked for, and that was my motion was gonna be to start the process.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna start the process.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next person, uh, on our agenda we have is Chris Jones. Good evening. Tim, you wanna come a little closer?
Yeah.
There you go.
I'm here, uh, well, my name is Chris Jones, and I'm here once again regarding the, uh, flooding onto my property from the neighborhood. And actually, I'm here today just to find out if any, uh, thing has been done through the board and, um, what's going to happen going forward, because we're getting ready to move into another rainy season in the next couple of months. The last time I was here, um, the board talked about putting a drain- side of Smith Car, and I haven't heard anything from anyone yet to say what's going to be done or if it's going to be done.
That's correct. We had talked about doing a cross drain at the bottom of, uh, of where, where Smith Car runs into Sidewell Road, which is basically down, down from her home, and I thought that we were doing some work on getting a cross drain in there, which was, okay. Yeah, can we get Kenees in?
And the reason I keep coming back is I thought about it, and it was actually over five years ago. I think I said before, it was like three years, but it's actually over-
You mentioned to me that it was some time ago, but it hadn't happened, so we need to go ahead and, and make it happen and get, get it back on the agenda.
You had asked for four years ago, didn't you?
Yeah, I was asking for four years, but, uh, but I've been here a year and it hasn't happened, so we need to get, get it back.
Couple of years ago, I had to bring in dirt just to try to get the ground to a point where it was dry, and within the last couple of years, I guess all that dirt has worn, you know, washed away, and now we're back to not even being able to put the lime more in there and begin, we have to bush haul it.
Let me, uh, the, the, uh, road manager is, uh, Mr. Bacon is back there and kinda bring out, I don't know if he was listening outside or not, but Kenees, what we're talking about is, is trying to get a cross drain at the bottom of, of the hill where, uh, Smith Car runs in the sidewalk and see if we can get a cross drain to get some of the water that's coming down there and collecting at the bottom of, at her property to move out, get it to the other side of, of Sidewell Road.
Okay. And what's, do you know what the timeline is on that right now?
Right now, we, 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 we just starting over again, so the timeline, they'll have to tell me how soon that they might be able to get to it, uh, but we wanna try to do it before we get to the rainy season, like you said, uh, which is, um, a few months away, but we, if we could get, get something done, we're gonna try to get it done as quickly as possible, but I'll have to let them talk, because they do the work. Kenees, what do you think about that?
I believe, uh, I looked at it, uh, Mr. Banks, what going on? I got to give you a bad creek, 'cause I think that's who owed the war. They got main water, uh, caps right there where the cross drain needs to go in. They got like two, uh, caps there, so that gonna be something they gonna have to move, 'cause what they sitting there is there where the cross drain gonna have to go in.
Okay, so-
I got, I got a plan for it, make it to go, we got to go east to a cross drain that crawls over, uh, Sidewell Road to go across the field, but I got to get that, them water taps out the way.
Okay.
Definitely.
Yeah. Okay, so getting Bear Creek to move is- Tim, what do you, what do you think?
I said I could help with the Bear Creek.
Bear Creek, well, why don't y'all get your heads together and give us an idea so that I can tell Ms. Jones, uh, what we think we can do and what we can accomplish, and let's try to see what we can get done.
With Bear Creek, I'll-
Yeah, with Bear Creek, uh, if y'all let me know something as quick as possible, so I can let her know something by the end of the week, I can just give her a call and, and, tell her what the plan is, and that's about all we can do at this point, is tell her what the plan is and try to get it done. Okay.
So right now, it's just a matter of getting with Bear Creek to see-
Well, we gotta get those, uh, those, those water mains out of the way, so when we do come across, we don't cut off everybody's water, because we, we came across, uh, if they got out there and start digging and the water main still in the way, they is gonna cut off everybody's water. Don't want that to happen when they can just-
So where are the water mains on, um, Smith, where-
Well, you said those water mains are move, are going east and west on Sid, on Sidewell Road?
They might be at the intersection of Smith Car and Sidewell, with the cross drain needs to go across Sidewell, I mean, Smith Car to get down to the cross drain that go across Sidewell.
So the cross drain crosses that intersection at the end of Smith Car?
Yeah, that's what the plan is, that's how to get the water across, across, uh, so it's going underneath the water, underneath the road and going across and hopefully exit on out into the, the pasture.
All right.
At least it'll get it on the other side where nobody lives right there.
Yeah.
Uh-huh, okay.
And this gentleman here? Tim, Tim Bryant?
He's the engineer.
Herman?
He's the engineer, Tim Bryant.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Chris. Okay, who we have next?
David Brewer?
David Brewer.
I'm David Brewer, I'm representing Nine Mile Lake, out off Coffin Road in Paul Griffin's district. Um, we need some help getting that road paved out there. It's been, you know, it's had a DBST done on it years ago, probably twenty-ten, but it was just done entirely too thin. It's, I mean, it's paper thin in some places. You can see the gravel under the road bed, on, on the road bed. Um, that's about a six-mile road. Our first gate is like three and a half miles up Coffin Road. Then, another issue we have is a washout about three and a half miles from forty-three up Coffin Road, and probably needs a road bed redone, oh, I'm gonna say about a hundred feet. The typical, typical road bed in there is about sixteen feet, it's about thirteen feet now with the shoulder gone and into the edge of pavement. I was parked there before I came down here, and I was parked in it just getting some measurements and looking. School bus came, I had to move so they could get by. Two-way traffic, it's a two-way traffic road, but when you get to that point, only one way.
Thanks, uh, David, for coming by, and, uh, I'm familiar with that, and I'm pretty sure the road manager is familiar with Coffin Road. Uh, the thing is, just like you said, it's like a six-mile road.
That's right, six-point road.
A good wide road, and there probably about four or five houses. What I got planned for is, uh, hopefully in the next month or so, uh, the board choose to, uh, uh, borrow some money to do some overlay, and I'm not gonna overload it all Coffin Road, I can tell you that now. Uh, what I'm looking at is for the road manager to be able to go up there and do some long patching on the real rough spots. I, I can't really justify to the rest of the district of going up there and overlaying that six-mile road, and that's where all the timber is at in northeast Madison County, coming off Fire Tower Road, coming off, uh, Beaver Dam Road, all them trying to make it to Coffin Road, because it's a wide road, and it don't bump big truck bad, but they tears it up. So my best saying is I'm gonna try to get you all some good long patching on Coffin Road that you won't shake yourself to death, uh, when you're trying to get to your, your home up there. And I know it ain't what you wanna hear, but I'm gonna try to help you as much as finance will.
Okay. Well, um, we appreciate anything you can do, we appreciate what you did in the last two weeks out there.
And they need to do some more of that.
We do, we need more of that.
A little thicker, probably, on some spots.
Before I came up here, I, I rode out on Fire Tower Road, boy, that is sweet, and it's just gravel. Reminds me of when I was a kid, you know, riding out in the country and after rain smelling the honey soda.
Sitting on a dirt road, and that's why I have, part of probably why I have allergies and asthma now. Uh, some people that live on those roads, they rather have anything besides that dust, because they get it every day, every day. Uh, and, uh, that's what we did several years ago, got people out of the dust and mud, and now it's turned into a washboard, so we gonna try to smooth it out, son.
Okay, well, anything you can do, we'll appreciate it.
Okay, and, and our road manager gonna go up there and check that spot, what you were talking about, that closing in?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure he gonna send somebody up there tomorrow and, and, and see what's going on there, because we don't even, we don't need to have a dangerous spot there. So, Kenees, you hear that? Can you take that out for us? All right.
And I appreciate you taking care of Mr. Proctor too, that first mile, one-point-two miles, half of forty-three, he's the first house on the right, right there at Gambler.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Eighty-eight years old.
I'm hoping they went a little farther than that, putting down that asphalt, then they go past, past there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they went on past, you know, doing strips, looked like they took a, a truckload and did a patch, maybe a hundred feet.
Yeah.
Went on down.
Yeah, yeah.
All the way down to the Beaver Dam bottom.
All right, well, they got to go a little further.
I sure appreciate it.
But I went down further on Coffin Road, and it was, there wasn't no holes, but I put a harder hole in my truck in the road.
Oh, yeah, well, hey, now, we gotta commend your, your road team that goes out there and do, does a patching. They come out there with three trucks, spend two days patching holes. You know, it's, it's, it's like a good road bed up under it.
Yeah, now we gotta cover them patches up.
That's right, that's right. Well, thank you, sir, I appreciate y'all staying.
Thank you for coming here.
All right, thank you. Let's see, is that all of our concerned citizens? I believe it is.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we do have a public hearing.
Do we have to hear it?
You ever gotta have this public hearing.
Have we entered the public hearing?
No, we have not.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are now in the public hearing.
All right, I'm going to pass out a packet real quick. Thank you.
All right, appreciate it. All right.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, what you have before you are all of the changes that have, uh, been made to the, or proposed changes to the two thousand and twenty-one tax rolls since the last meeting, where the, uh, board closed the opportunity to file appeals, and three of those- read in as appeals at the last meeting. And they are on the list that I provided to you. Shaw's Law Firm had a representative here, uh, Mr. John Grant, for Canton Tower Plaza. Uh, we agreed to make a reduction on that property, and they have agreed to take the, uh, number that we recommended, and we, Cynthia and Ronnie have a, uh, a letter that they've emailed, I think, and where they've agreed to that. Evans Peachtree, they were representing Madison Malko, uh, same thing there, we had a slight reduction on that property, it felt it was justified, and they have, um, they've sent in a letter agreeing to that as well. And I've read in one more, it was Nationwide Consulting for Countrywide, Country Club Village, it's a retail center in Ridgeland, and again, we had a, we agreed to a slight reduction there, and, and they've, uh, emailed in, I'll share that with, uh, Cynthia and Ronnie later, where they have accepted that number as well. So at this point in time, I would ask that you close the public hearing, and unless someone is here to speak on these and approve these changes, if you're in agreement with them.
Okay. Can we get a motion?
Make a motion, second to close the public hearing.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, Karen, we got a motion to approve changes that were made.
Motion.
Is that second?
I second it with-
This motion into that?
I think, I think that motion should probably be read in now.
Let me, let me read this motion and then see if this is the one you-
Yeah.
Who's making it? See who's making it? Okay, see if this is your motion, Supervisor Jones.
She's the maid, Cynthia didn't make it.
Number one, to accept, to accept the tax assessor's recommendation for the aforementioned parcels, Michael Lightman Senior, Tower Associates, Bright Fletcher, Madison Malko, and Nationwide Consulting. Is that all of them? Number two, acknowledge and amend the preliminary twenty-twenty-one homestead applications, parentheses, equalization. Three, acknowledge the deletions to the tax, excuse me, acknowledge the deletions to the preliminary twenty-twenty-one homestead applications. Number four, acknowledge and affirm the values set forth by the tax assessor in the preliminary twenty-twenty-one real property decreases. Number six, acknowledge and affirm the values set forth by the tax assessor in the preliminary twenty-twenty-one real property increases agreed by the taxpayer. Number seven, acknowledge and affirm the values set forth by the tax, excuse me, values set forth by the tax assessor in the preliminary, I must have reread two lines.
Mm-hmm.
Be back that up. Number six is acknowledge and affirm the values set forth by the tax assessor in the preliminary twenty-twenty-one real property increases agreed by the taxpayer, that's correct. Number seven, acknowledge and affirm the values set forth by the tax assessor in the preliminary twenty-twenty-one personal property decreases. Number eight, acknowledge and affirm the values set forth by the tax assessor in the preliminary twenty-twenty-one personal property increases agreed by taxpayer, and finally adopt and enter the order agreed by Mississippi Code annotated twenty-seven dash thirty-five dash one zero five and by the Department of Revenue. Is that your motion, Supervisor Jones? Very good motion.
Is that your second?
I, I second it, and just wanna make sure that the letters are in that motion and attached-
Yes, sir.
Uh, to that motion as well, those three letters that, uh, was mentioned by Mr. Kennedy.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor of motion?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, consent items.
Make a motion for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Supervisor Paul Griffin, District Five, he's a hundred. I haven't heard that.
Uh, uh, it ain't.
Go ahead.
Ain't me, one of my constituents.
Uh.
I was just wanna, uh, make a motion authorize Mike to draw up a resolution for Miss Ada Harris Turner, a hundred years old.
Right.
I emailed you some information on her earlier, Mike.
Okay.
So you can draw that, draw from that, and, uh, and authorize the president to sign it, 'cause I wanna get it and present it to her before our next meeting.
Okay, good. Okay, is that second?
That's motion.
Okay, all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good, good, good.
And while I'm, while I'm here, Tim is still in the room, I wanna make a motion that, uh, we authorize Tim and the road department to put up a, all stock at Moss and Robertson Road.
Oh, okay, Moss and Robertson. I'll make the second there. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. What? Okay, um, I think, uh, next business item we still have Norman. One mill, one mill, application.
Okay, what you have before you is the, um, application for certification with the Department of Revenue. This is something you see every year from my office, it's an annual application, just shows the, uh, it's a statement of qualifications and capabilities to perform our duties, basically, that's required for the one-mill application that, that you receive each year once they, um, approve the tax rolls.
Okay. Can we get a motion on that? Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Norm. Okey-dokey. Uh, Tim?
All right, first item I have is the acknowledgement of court order to pay the court ordered appraiser a thousand dollars for the court ordered appraisal for a piece of property that we have, uh-
Court order.
Been into eminent domain proceedings on for Bozeman Road.
Make a motion for approval.
Is that second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, next item I have is the, a request from state aid, and it's attached to this that releases the contract for Hemp Hill Construction effective July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, from maintenance on Ben Luckett Road Bridge Project. It's also requested that the board president be authorized to attach the, uh, joint letter of acceptance.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, exact same thing, except for this one is for the Highway sixteen bridge.
All in favor?
Aye.
Engineering Department recommends approval for the Dewey's Road Grading Project. Hemp Hill Construction was the low bidder at two-hundred-ninety-nine thousand, nine-hundred-fifty-one dollars and forty cents.
I'm gonna make a motion, uh, just for a quick question after.
Yeah, okay, I'll second the motion. Go ahead.
Where are the awards or the bids for this?
There was only one bid, and it was Hemp Hill.
Okay, um, that, that's not understood in here as well, but I would like for it to be understood in the minutes.
Okay.
That it was just one-
Was a single bid? Okay.
It was a single bid.
I'll get with them.
And what kind of timeframe do they have on this?
I believe this is a ninety-day contract, but I will double check on that.
If you will, because I know Dewey's Road is, you know, we're trying to move it forward pretty quickly.
Mm, we've been waiting on ceasefire for-
I understand.
Months now.
Yeah.
Months.
Okay, thank you.
We do have the, all the right-of-way cleared from-
We have all the right-of-way cleared except for the stumps that are sitting on top of a ceasefire line, and ceasefire is, they're out there, they're splicing fiber right now, so they should be done, they say, by the twenty-fifth.
Okay, so we can't start until after the, uh, after the twenty-fifth, and that's twenty-fifth of this month, right?
Right, it is, and basically after the twenty-fifth is when we'll go out there and remove the stumps, and Hemp Hill will come right in, right after that.
Okay, thank you. Next?
Vote?
Well, yeah, I need a, need a vote on that one.
We didn't have Carrie?
We just, I think we did vote, we just-
We didn't.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next item I have is the final plat for Yandale Farms, one B. Uh, this is twenty-one point eight acres with fifty lots at roughly a quarter acre each. We do have the letter of credit in hand for the asphalt wearing surface.
Take it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item I have is permission to advertise the countywide roadway striping project. This will stripe the roads that we've just paved, and it's not countywide for him, but it is in, in several different districts, so we, it's about six roads.
Can't let it be on the list?
If you, if you've got money left in the bond, it could be.
I make motion for approval.
I, I, I second it, but, uh, little more thought. What do you mean, road we just paved? You talking about?
Ones that we just-
On the last, last, uh-
Right, on the-
Borrow, is that what you talking about?
Yes, the last bond that we did for last year, the, the twenty-twenty-one road projects.
Okay, uh, if we'll get us a list of those roads and bring it back.
Okay, I will.
Just email them to us, if you can email them to us tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, email, be good.
Be good.
Yeah, just email. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Next item I have is permission to advertise for the construction of a fence at Sulfur Springs Park.
The motion.
I make a motion.
I'll second the motion. Okay.
So we're going to put a fence around the whole park or the lake or what are we doing and why are we doing it?
We're going to put a fence along Highway 17, or I'm sorry, along Sulfur Springs Road, Highway 17 down to the woods and then a part of the way down. Remind me that side street?
Barnes.
Barnes. Down to the spillway. Along Sulfur Springs, we're going to do more of a decorative fence with the spikes on top of it. That one's going to be six feet and the chain link fence will be eight feet. Right. It's, it's high enough. A fence keeps out the honest people, but it will deter kids from climbing over it for sure.
And, and four wheels from going on it after hours.
So do we have a problem with that or you just worried that we might have to try?
When you're in the country, you always have, might have a problem. Four wheels. Ask the sheriff on that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Final item I have is Caroline Point of Caroline Phase Two. This is a final plat. There is no public infrastructure in this. This is just subdividing a piece of property in smaller lots.
Okay. I move. All in favor?
Aye.
I do have one additional item that Mike asked me to present now. Russum Road. You know, we've talked about Russum Road for quite a while. I have the legal description and we would like to go ahead with advertising for a public hearing on that street. The abandonment of that street.
That's the one we're going to abandon, right?
Yes, sir.
Good. I'll make the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. President, Board of Supervisors, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
First item I have is H.L. Sumler Jr. It's a dilapidated structure at 120 Kane Creek Road since Supervisor District Four. Subject was properly noticed. I do not believe he is here. Like to ask if the board would adjudicate, adjudicate this property and find that it is a state of uncleanliness that it needs to be cleaned.
Okay.
Either by means of the Board of Supervisors or contract.
I'll make the.
I mean by the road department, excuse me.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item is Salvador Escudero Lara. This was another zoning violation, junk vehicles, salvage materials, and too many animals per acre on the four acre tract of land located at 917 John Day Road, Supervisor District Five. It's in a state of uncleanliness to adjudicate the property and have it cleaned either by the road department or contract.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Number 58 Cedar Point, preliminary plat for a new subdivision. There's five lots ranging from 7.66 acres to 12.067 acres. South off Cedar Hill Road is in Supervisor District Four, zoned A1.
Motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And that is all I have at this time.
Yes, sir.
Question. Own the property in Camden where the old store used to be at Lauren Road and, and 17. Is there anything else we need to do, the board need to do before we go in there and start cleaning it up?
I'm going to let Andy talk on this real quick.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah. Obviously you, you guys know that, that the road department is authorized to go in there and, and do that. Or the property cleanup statute does authorize the Board of Supervisors entering the contracts with third parties to go in there and do that cleanup as well. If it's just a matter of cutting grass, that's a, that's a professional services contract. Does not fall under the, the bid law statute. If there's any demolition that goes along with that, that's considered a construction contract. That does require the, the bid process. And the only other caution that I would have or, or give or just bring to your attention is.
I didn't hear that.
I said the only other item on that that I would bring to your attention is that under the property cleanup statute, the maximum amount that you can collect on cleanup is $20,000 or the fair market value of the property, whichever of those is less. So as an example, let's just say that you bid it out and the lowest bid is $40,000 to clean the property up. Maximum amount that you can collect is 20. So that 20's got to, and can certainly go after the property owner or assess that to their taxes for that $20,000, but the other $20,000's got to come from somewhere. If that makes sense.
I've been dealing with that property a long time and I would like to see it cleaned up as quick as possible. If we even got to the step where we can get bids on it, and you saying that we are?
Yes, sir. It's my understanding that the property owner's been notified. You guys have deemed that as a blighted property or unclean property or whatever. So I think we can go ahead and, and move forward with the bid process if that's what you guys decide to do.
And that the old building and the, and the house, Scott?
That's on the bill. Yes. It can be on both of them. That's correct. Or we can have the road department bush all that other piece of property. Either or.
Can we, like Supervisor Griffin saying, get a, get an estimate on it? But can we divide that in two different parts if need be to get that under 20,000? If it's over 20,000, can we go to half of it now and then half of it later?
It's, it's $20,000 annually.
Yes.
Is the way that that goes. But I mean, I don't think you could bust up an invoice and, you know, over several years.
I'm just saying if we decide to clean, and I'm just using it, if it's 50,000, we may want to do 20 of it this year and maybe 20 next year instead of the board eating the other 30,000.
Completely following what you're saying there and that.
Do that.
Yes, sir. That's.
If his board chooses to do that.
Yes, sir. Now, to answer your question, you could go back out there every year, clean it up and assess that to, to their taxes. That's an annual limit on that.
Mr. President, there's a lot of noise in here beside the Board of Supervisors instead of talking.
I think, I think I hear some background noise and I don't think.
I would ask that whoever's got the conversation and move it outside. There we go. If you will, guys, because it's hard to hear people up at the microphone. But so basically you say we can, we can do this every year up to 20,000.
Yes, sir.
Or whichever is less.
That's right. $20,000 or the fair market value. So as an example, you go in there and cut the grass this year and it could be 19,999. You go clean up the building next year, same amount, same limits apply.
It's Supervisor Griffin going down the road as far as getting the estimate on cleanup, if you will. When we get that, if you bring back in what the property value is worth as well to us.
Yes, sir.
If that's where he's headed now.
Yeah. One, one question before I go any further. Is that one parcel or two parcel? If it's two parcels there, can we get 20,000 on both of them?
It's two.
I, I, I think that would work too. If it's, if it's busted up into two parcels, clean one up, clean the other up. And, and the, the limitation would apply to each parcel, if that makes sense.
First, then we can wait around on that house, old house.
Well, you can actually get estimates on both of them if you're going to split it up in both parcels.
Yeah.
I mean, two different parcels and bring back.
I guess my motion to be is, I find Scott getting estimate on the old building and the old house on cleaning it up.
I got to get an appraisal too. I have to value the property.
Right. That's, that's the only way to get the fair market value is an appraisal.
That'll prove in there too, right?
Yeah.
In that motion.
Which building is this?
It's the old store.
You're going to provide us information for this?
Old store right across from the post office in Camden.
That's on Howard 17, isn't it?
17.
And there's the house.
House is right next door.
Yeah. Directly to the south of.
You're going to provide us information, Scott, on what this is?
It's in the documents I provided to the board. Tax parcel IDs and everything is there. Oh, excuse me. I didn't have those. I'll get them to you.
Thank you.
My bad.
Yes, sir. I swear to say you're going to provide us this. I appreciate it.
So the, the motion is that they will get a.
Survey.
A, a, appraisal done on that to get the determined value. And they'll also get, I guess, quotes on.
Yeah.
On doing the job of cleanup.
Yeah.
On parcel one and parcel two.
Both separate, separate parcel, each separate parcel.
Okay.
And to be clear Supervisor Griffin, your priority list is the old building, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to second the motion and we can go ahead and finish the conversation.
Okay. Scott, can you go ahead and get those parcels and give to, to, to Ronnie before the end of the meeting?
I'm going to step right across the hall and get everything he needs directly.
Okay. Good deal.
We can attach that to the motion.
Sir?
He's going to go and bring that information back so we can attach that to the motion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty. Thank you very much. Okay. Shelton Van, oh, Mike Espy. Board Attorney.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
I've got four items on the agenda. One, both the, first to relate to the new city of Gluckstadt and the second to relate to the Ken lawsuit, which normally that's in executive session, but we're out of the matter. But we, we need to acknowledge the orders that the Georgia already entered, so we don't need executive session. So I move right to item 59, item 60. I do want to introduce the new mayor of Gluckstadt, Mr. Walter Morrison. Before we begin, I think it's great to have him say hello to the board because you're about to take an action, hopefully. That relates directly to the, the collection of taxes and the assessment of properties in the new city. And then John Scanlon is with him, the lawyer for Gluckstadt. So Mr. Walter Morrison, Mayor of, Mayor of Gluckstadt.
Thank you, Mr. Espy. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I appreciate being here today and I, I don't have much to say other than I'll tell you this. Mr. Espy and as well as Sheriff Tucker, who I've spoken to, they both have my cell phone. And if anybody needs me from the county level during this transition period, call me, day or night. It doesn't matter to me when you call. If you need something, as much as we need the county and the cooperation through this transition period, you're welcome to call me if you need anything. The best way to get an answer from the city is to call me and I'll get the, the question answered. And I do want to thank you all for helping us through this transition. As you might can imagine, I have no experience in forming a city from the ground up. We have tasked a lot of responsibilities and as of right now, we don't have the money to buy this clip. So we definitely need you. We need your cooperation. We appreciate what you've done for us and if there's anything at all that we can do during this transition period better, please let us know. And I'm here to answer whatever questions, if any of you have a, a question as of right now. But I did just want to thank you all for, for all your help.
Well, thanks for coming by, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I just want to make a statement that, that we appreciate the fact you came by. At the same time, we are all standing here ready to roll up our sleeves and help you because you've got a, a, a pretty big task on your hands and we want you to be successful. So anything we can do to help, we will. Anybody else have any statements or questions?
I, I would like to say congratulations on you and the Board becoming a city because I know there's many hours of work that was put in this along with your attorney as well. And, and I also along with Supervisor Banks saying that, hey, this is a partnership. You know, this is something that we're going to work together and we want y'all to continue to grow because it just helps the county in general, you know, for growth.
That's right.
So we are here to work with you and to plan ahead and, and hopefully move everything forward together.
Okay. Again, thank all of you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. Well, I do want to say that to the board that the administrator and I have been working with the council for Gluckstadt and the mayor to come up with a appropriate transition of services process from the county to the city. And we were moving along at a good clip. And of course, you know that Shelton is ill, so that, those meetings had to be interrupted. But so that Shelton is well enough to come back, we expect to resume the transition of services timetable and, and all of that. So I want to let the mayor and the council know that. But in, in concert with what President Banks said about rolling up our sleeves to work with the new city of Gluckstadt, we're going to start tonight. And if you see me moving around the room, that is because things are coming together even as we speak. Before Gluckstadt can begin offering services to the citizens of the new municipality, they have to know where the revenue is coming from. In order to know where the revenue is coming from, you have to have tax assessment exercise within the confines of the new city. And just like we are doing the same process with Ridgeland, Madison, Flora, and Canton, we have contracts that you've approved for several years with those four municipalities to conduct the process of assessing their properties within your municipality and collecting taxes for them. And then it's, it's statute allows for 3% fee capped at $75,000 for that, for, for the gross average taxes emanating from that municipality. So the agreement that you have before you, which is item, item 59, I believe, is, is, is that agreement. And it, it tracks the same language as the contracts for the other cities that I mentioned. And I'm recommending approval. The difference is because we have been working on this at the, really until today, I want to recommend that we strike the dates. Now, within the contract before you, it says that the tax assessor and the tax collector will work in concert to assess and collect taxes on properties in Gluckstadt for the fiscal year 2022, 2023, 2024, 2025. I want to ask us to strike 2025 for several reasons. One, 2025 doesn't line up with the rest of the contracts that we've already approved of the other cities. And then secondly, you've got to have a new board, you know, by then, and we don't want to impose on that new board. So I'm asking within the contract for you that we just delete the fiscal year 2025 and let that year take care of itself by the new board. Other than that, I'm going to recommend that, that we do this. We, we do know that in discussion with Mr. Scanlon, he told me that there's a deadline of September 15th for Gluckstadt to adopt its budget. So they've got to move quickly. And this will allow the tax assessor and the tax collector to begin the process of doing what they do for the new municipality. So I recommend that you adopt the MOU for the city of Gluckstadt between Gluckstadt and Madison County to assess municipal properties within municipality and for collection of those taxes.
Okay. Are we? We got 59 and 60. Are we doing, doing it together?
Well, we, we can, let's do them separate.
This is actually item 60, I think you're talking about, Mike, on the.
Yes, item 60.
Item 60 is what I just described.
Where we're going to move 2025.
Yes, sir.
Out of, out of 59, we didn't.
This is, this is item 60. So I recommend. This is, this is item sixty. So I recommend item sixty for adoption by this board.
Okay. Can we get a motion on item sixty with the changes referred to by the attorney in terms of taking out the, uh, twenty-twenty-five?
Motion.
Okay, is that second?
I'll second, uh, this with a statement if I could, or
Make a statement.
With a question maybe. Mike, this is, uh, the same three percent up to seventy-five thousand as the city of Madison, Ridgeland.
Same language.
Same language, same percentage?
Yes, three percent.
Okay, same thing in?
Three percent capped at, it's capped at seventy-five thousand, but it's the same three percent of, of, uh,
Got it.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we go back to item fifty-nine.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I'm sorry they were moved out of order. Uh, but now the statute does allow for, uh, increased fee for services, uh, that are considered to be extraordinary uh, for the county or the city, uh, to pay additional compensation to the tax assessor and the tax collector for these duties, same duties. Uh, and I'm, I am, uh, you see the agreement before you. And, uh, it calls for an additional fee for the tax assessor of the amount of, uh, one thousand five hundred dollars a month to get cracking, uh, and begin to, to, uh, begin the assessment exercise for Gluckstat to allow the city by September fifteenth to, to, uh, adopt the budget. So this is, this is statutorily allowable and the amount is up to you. And that amount is, uh, requested by the tax assessor in that amount. And I don't, uh, I recommend that, uh, that this be adopted now. And the statute says the city can pay or the county can pay. And, uh, uh, within this contract, it says that the county pays this fifteen hundred dollars to relieve uh, the burden of, uh, Gluckstat of this fee. So I recommend that, uh, that you adopt this item, additional compensation for the tax assessor.
Is that a one-time?
No, it says run concurrently, it says run concurrently with the contract years.
And it's monthly?
Monthly, fifteen hundred dollars monthly, yes.
Mike is, uh,
I told Gluckstat gets their feet under them.
And this is the tax assessor and collector?
Now, we've been huddling in the back, uh, and, uh, Ms. Kay Pace is here. Uh, and, uh, we've, uh, because the contract before you only mentions tax assessor, not tax collector. But she has duties as well to collect the taxes for, for, uh, for Gluckstat. And, uh, in conversation with Ms. Pace, her situation is a little bit different, uh, than Normans, uh, because of her, uh, classification and employment system is a little different. And so she's asking for the same amount. We've got to draft a contract, which I'll take responsibility for doing. Uh, but, um, she's asking that that money go directly to her office to be distributed by her at her office.
Hi, okay. First of all, you know, I like, are you ready for a motion on the tax assessor?
Uh, you go ahead and make your statement first and we can.
My statement was made when I asked the question really about the fifteen hundred.
Yes.
And that, and you answered it. That's just actually to the tax assessor, which is in front of us today.
Yeah, that's what I said.
That's the agreement that's before you today.
Yeah, and the tax collector is not at this point, but she's asking for the same.
She's here asking you through me
Yeah.
For the same amount of money, but the difference is, uh, that, uh, it goes to her office, you know, uh, you, you, you're free to come in there and speak, Kay, but I'm, I'm saying her classification is different right now within the per's employment system than nor Ms. Kennedy.
Can we take hers up at the next board meeting?
Uh, well.
And, and the reasoning for it is it'll be in writing?
Yes.
That, that's the only reason, it'll just be in writing? I mean, is it anything, any reasoning not to take it up for the next, at the next board meeting just because?
Well, the next board meeting is September, so, I mean, that's before the budget and before the taxes are collected, so, so yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just, just because we really need something in writing.
I agree.
Instead of what you're just actually
Yes.
Saying to us.
We'll get on it and have it in writing.
Okay.
So I recommend, uh, the item, additional compensation for the tax assessor at this amount for the duties as specified.
I make a motion for approval.
All in favor of item fifty-nine?
Aye.
Aye?
Okay.
And you'll bring back the tax collectors, uh,
I will do it. I'll get with, uh, Ms. Pace and, and draft it and make sure it's appropriate to the statutory language and commiserate with what she needs to do her work.
And I do see both the tax assessor and collector there behind you, um, and, and I guess I probably should have asked this question ahead of time. Uh, we're, I guess we're gonna have time to get this information in, uh, and, and move everything forward in a timely manner. And like I said, I should have asked that question before we voted on everything, but I'd always like to hear from the person that's gonna actually do the work.
We are studying that. I, I feel like we've got the ability and the resources to do that otherwise. But, but I would like to read the final agreement and I think Kay would agree with that, just to look at the language within the document and the dates and the requirements. I've enjoyed meeting these two gentlemen tonight, Mr. Mayor and, and Mr. Scanlon, and look forward to working with them as well, you know, at the county level. And, uh, we're gonna do all we can do to make that happen.
Okay, that's before we adopt the budget?
Well, that was a question I had earlier on the timing of this. Um, when you're referring to September fifteenth, if, yeah, if you would come up.
Yes, sir.
Can you, can you elaborate on that a little and how you intend on moving forward?
Yes, sir. First of all, appreciate y'all's making time for this and I also want to express gratitude on behalf of the city of Gluckstat. As I understood the question earlier is whether we were, and tell me, Mr. Kennedy, if I'm recasting this correctly, whether or not the city of Gluckstat was trying to get an assessment for the current fiscal year ending twenty-twenty-one. The answer to that is no, and I don't know if that was clear before tonight. Maybe we didn't make it clear. Gluckstat's not levying any taxes for the current year. When they adopt their fiscal year budget, which is gonna happen, uh, in the coming weeks, it's essentially gonna be a one or a two-month budget because they're incurring expenditures in this fiscal year that when they pay them, even if they pay them in December, when they start, start getting their revenue or whenever that may be, since they're gonna relate back to this fiscal year for them to be legal expenditures for playing, paying their consultants, they've signed a lease for a new city hall space, you know, they're trying to hire a city clerk, things like that, post office boxes, you know, just a number of things, publications. So they're just trying to get a budget adopted for the current fiscal year that obviously everybody, every other taxing entity in the state of Mississippi did it about this time a year ago, but they've only had their charter for a month, so they're trying to get that done. And the timing is just such that we're also, at this exact same time, trying to adopt a levy for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two and adopting a budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. And all we were trying to enter into the interlocal with the tax assessor's office for was the assessment for fiscal year ending twenty-twenty-two. It was my understanding that that was not only the custom of the county and the tax assessor's office, but the requirement under the law. We took the agreement that I understood this county has in place with the other municipalities and literally the only word we changed in it was the word Gluckstat. But these changes, obviously, there's certainly no problem from the city's level at all, and, uh, I'd be happy to continue working with Mr. Espy. I really appreciate the speed at which, with which this was addressed. I mean, as he said, we were discussing it in the hallway, we were emailing it today. And I certainly appreciate agenda deadlines and, and being prepared for meetings and things, and I've been in enough boardrooms to know about that process. But I just wanna thank you all on behalf of the city. They did, uh, just as a quick coattail, they adopted at their last official board meeting a resolution of gratitude expressing appreciation to the Board of Supervisors. And, um, I'm trying to get the minutes and all that stuff shored up and I'm gonna send an official copy to your attorney because the, the official position of the city is one of gratitude and appreciation for the five of you and everything the county is doing and continues to do. And certainly for my law office as well. But anyway, I hope that was probably too long of an answer, but the, the, I'm trying to say they're only gonna assess in twenty-twenty-two and not twenty-twenty-one if that's what you were initially asking, Mr. Kennedy. Okay.
So I guess my, my question still stands out there to the tax assessor and collector. With that understanding, uh, is the time good as far as y'all being able to, to do the work and everything on time? Because I know that they are depending on the money, they talking about the city of Gluckstat
Yes, sir.
Coming in, so.
Nothing's been said at all about the avalon on the license, on the license plates?
Could you come a little closer to the microphone, please, ma'am?
Nothing at all has been discussed about the avalon on the license plates. And for that to be done, they have to go through the Department of Revenue
Mm-hmm.
To, uh, get everything okayed with them and follow whatever they need done. Uh, they, I can't just jump in there and start collecting for Gluckstat. That has to be from the Department of Revenue. The other thing is, um, it's, uh, he's talking about a two-month period. Uh, I don't know what two months he's talking about, but you see, um, my office doesn't run that way, you know?
Oh, certainly. I'm not trying to simulate.
No, no, um, no.
I just mean that
I just need to understand.
The budget, it's essentially just gonna be for expenditures that they incurred in September and, I mean,
Yeah.
First half of September.
But where do you intend for that money to come from?
It was our understanding that the commercial sales tax collections, you know, the diversions for that would cover that.
The commercial sales tax?
Yeah, because you mentioned the avalon, they're not levying taxes for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one at all, license plates or real property.
Well, it'll be twenty-one, twenty-two.
Right, twenty-one, twenty-two is what they're gonna levy taxes for.
Okay, but if you do that, then, uh, in a month and a half, I've got to start collecting taxes.
Mr. President, if you would, maybe, um, ask them to just go outside and talk and maybe come back in because it's very important for all of us to understand, really, the question is, is, is the timeline exactly what y'all expect and what we actually or what the tax assessor and collector can do?
Yes, sir.
For, for everybody to understand where our money is coming from, you know? And so if y'all would, maybe, uh, Mr. President, do you mind them, this coming back in?
I don't mind at all. And that way we could finish up on some of the things we had to do and, and then they can bring that back to us.
Yeah, but you, you voted for the tax assessor.
Yeah, we voted for the tax assessor.
Thank you, Norman.
I think we voted for fifty-nine and sixty, I think was going on right now.
I checked six, y'all, so, yeah.
They're talking about the framework because you asked the question.
I asked a question to make sure that they're all on the same page and, and what I understand and just heard that they're not.
Yeah, and you apologized for, for asking that question
I don't apologize.
After the fact. You said, that's a question you should have asked before we voted.
That's a question I should have asked before we ever voted.
Yeah.
But the meeting's not over with yet, though.
You did say that.
We live a vote.
We need to move forward within, and, uh, because I don't want, you know, six o'clock.
Your board attorney's waiting on you, Mr.
I got fifteen more minutes. Let's go.
Well, I'm on sixty-one and sixty-two, these, these both are good news. So this involves the Canton municipal elections and of course the board voted five-zero not to conduct the municipal elections. And we were able to achieve that. So, uh, number sixty-two is actually the final judgment of the, uh, judge ordering the municipality to conduct its own election. They do have three, they agreed on three people to conduct them. And I think the date is October fifth or something like that, but we're not involved in it. And so, uh, we need to acknowledge the judge's order of sixty-two ordering the municipal election commission to, uh, conduct the elections in North County. Then number sixty-one, uh, the judge granted a motion when, uh, when he, uh, when he made the order that the county conduct the election, we came in and said, we, you ought to respectfully disagree with your logic. We want you to reconsider. We had a motion. It was a seventy-page motion. The judge read it and, uh, he granted the motion. So, uh, that, that, uh, that's good. And so once he granted it, then he went to final judgment. So I just wanna offer these for acknowledgement. Uh, this is a kind of a new deal and people reading this would be part of law. So, uh, numbers sixty-one, sixty-two, I recommend, uh, acknowledgement and inclusion amendments.
Could we get sixty-one and sixty-two, uh, a motion for acknowledgement?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much, Attorney. Uh, Shelton is not with us. Let's go to our cup tro.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. Number, item number sixty-three is the approval of the budget amendments and the, um, interim cash transfers.
Make a motion for approval?
Is that second? All in favor?
Aye.
The next item sixty-four through sixty-six is the approval of the claims docket and the two payroll dockets.
Make a motion for approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item?
The numbers ain't right.
Oh, you, you close.
The next item sixty-seven and sixty-eight is the approval of the planning and zoning commission for their per diem for July eighth and August twelve.
Make a motion for approval?
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Pause back, sheriff's gone. Okay.
Okay. Number sixty-nine is the approval of the fee for claim docket.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Sheriff's back, pause gone, oh, pause there.
Number seventy is the acknowledgement so that we can submit the interim report for the American Rescue Plan.
Make a motion for approval?
Second.
All in favor?
That is to acknowledge.
That's the acknowledge. Okay, well.
To acknowledge and to, um, submit it.
And submit it.
Correct.
That's right.
And then the last item I have is number seventy-one, which is the approval of the travel and related expenses for a seminar held by the, um, MAS.
Make a motion for approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Put anybody's name down if you want.
You get to choose.
You get to choose, Ronnie.
Now it's on there. It's in there.
I'm seeing, but you, you, both of y'all made, uh, motions and then all three of y'all made seconds and so whatever, Ronnie, I'm gonna put it down, I'm gonna sign it.
It passed.
It passed. It passed. Multiple. Okay, um, every time I see them, I think I'm in for a longer board meeting. Okay, uh, Ronnie Light, do you have anything? Chance, your clerk. Did you say you didn't have anything?
Nothing was present.
Nothing. Okay, Sheriff Tucker?
Yes, sir.
You are. Okay.
I have, uh, and, and I apologize, I, I failed to get these on the agenda, but three personnel action forms of individuals we've hired. Normally get those to Loretta. Uh, I'll, I'll be glad to call the names. If you'd like, Colton Pig, Kessley Kircher and Christopher Long, standard base hires for the detention center. Bring us up to our numbers, uh, there if you could, uh, approve those for me.
Can we get a motion?
Motion.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I have our annual, uh, grant application for the impaired driving grant, uh, through the Department of Public Safety and Planning. Uh, this year's allotment, uh, through the grant or through the state is sixty-three thousand, uh, sixty dollars. This grant application requires the signature of, uh, of the board supervisors if we could get that approval.
Can we get a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, thirdly, I think last meeting I brought you all up to speed or, or just reminded you that we had a public auction coming up on some, uh, items that had been at the Sheriff's Department since before I was there. I don't know, that's, that's been quite a while. But, uh, we, we published that, uh, Mike's been in on the, the front end of that and all the way through it up until today. We conducted that auction. We had one item that was claimed by an individual. That was a boat. Uh, she's provided the proper paperwork to pick that boat up. It will be released to her. The other seven items were auctioned off today in front of the court or in front of the jail, uh, by me, uh, in, in public auction. And, uh, we, we have the, uh, receipt and money, uh, which was seven dollars each item. Uh, we only had, had one person bid. There was a dollar on each item, so, uh, we ask that that be acknowledged and that, uh, we get approval to proceed and dispose of that property in accordance with the law.
Motion for acknowledgement. Okay, is that second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Uh, the last thing I had is, is a letter of request, uh, on behalf of Minor Norman. I know he is our fire coordinator for the county. Y'all have I know he is our fire coordinator for the county, he also has, also has a great deal of EMT experience through the fire departments. I would ask that he be allowed to be a medic on our SWAT team that, at times, that did not interfere with his regular duties for the Madison County Board of Supervisors.
Motion? Second?
Second, just, and, and I'm assuming he has agreed to this as well.
He, he has agreed to it, he asked that I put this in writing so that there's no conflict with his regular duties. So that's what I'm doing, this is a, a letter of request to you to allow him, I believe, under the moonlighting statutes of the state now, that, that, that has to be provided.
And you have that letter?
I have the letter to provide to the clerk.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any old business?
Yeah, there was old business.
Old business?
Last meeting, you wasn't here, there were part of that committee on Francis Road that runs off of, Lake Road. I know you didn't took care of it.
But I know Francis Road, I went to it, but it was myself and I think Trey was.
Yeah, and Trey.
And he isn't here, so we haven't had a chance to converse. Yeah, Francis Road, it's a short road with, with several residents along it. Didn't have a contractor per se to, to lay out a subdivision road. It was just family people and people in the area who ended up buying an acre here and an acre there, and they, back then, that's how that road got built. I think that the county, it wouldn't take very much to have, you know, put the road in, in good working condition and stay in good working condition. And probably it would be better under county supervision also, that it helps that whole area. But by, by that road not being public, then I don't know what, how the sheriff handles going back in toward those houses and residents in the back. You, you don't have, the ambulance service may have some problems, even 911 may have some problems there, I don't know. So I'd recommend that, that, that we go ahead and, and accept it as a public road on, on our, on our road so we can get in and, and help them out and get them out of the mud.
If there was a motion, I would second.
Yeah, that's a motion.
What purpose is?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would like to ask the, the attorney, we heard from one, do we need to hear from the second board member? The member, you know, that was asked to go out and look at that road as well? Or can we hear from that member next board meeting?
If the member who spoke gave a summary of what both members saw, then, yep, you don't need the second number, make it first.
The question is, do we need to have the second board member to address this as well? Or do we not, from a legal standpoint? So we, from here on out, we can just have one supervisor go out there and look?
I think this is my policy.
Yeah.
You got to be ready to go and do it. Doesn't one force the other one to do it? But what the law says, over the way exactly, I have to do it.
I mean, if we have to, I mean, we can go ahead and prove it like we did, but I just want it on the agenda if we need to legally at the next board meeting, you know, for the.
Yeah, we, we'll ask Trey.
If we need to.
If we need to.
But I'm hearing you saying we don't need to. Okay.
So long as he agrees, I mean, if he came back and adamantly disagreed, then I would think that we would have to rethink and.
Got it. Good deal.
Purpose is, Mr. President?
Huh?
The name of this road?
Francis.
Francis.
Francis, F-R-I-S.
Okay, that's an old business, and under new business, well, one thing I, I think we all have at us, at us, at our desk, we have a, a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Madison County. Mississippi declaring the necessity for the sale and issuance of a general obligation note of the county in principal amount of not to exceed $6 million for the purpose of raising money to provide for the projects described herein, authorizing the publication of a notice, a note sale in connection with said note and the preparation and distribution of information and materials related to the sale and issuance of said note and for related purposes. And I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resolution and so we can move forward toward the purpose of selling the bonds to maintain our roads for, for asphalt, okay? So that's my motion, is that second?
I'll second it, just what the statement is, that this is on the short term.
Short term.
Bond, bond borrowing, which is five years, and that's what this is and which we do, and, and so it's paid back within five years.
Right.
So.
Great statement, great second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next, 72 was acknowledged, acknowledged proposed budget for FY '22 as required by statute. Can we get a motion of acknowledgement?
Make a motion?
Is that second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, acknowledged CMPV notice regarding EDA grants.
Make a motion for approval?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Join, I like this one, 74.
Please, you have gentlemen standing here.
I guess y'all over there not ready for me to do that one, huh?
Why?
Okay, do we have any, any other new business or any other business before the board? Is it Jim, you got something?
Executive.
Exactly, I thought you were going to say that. Okay, we have to go into closed termination.
Make a motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If I second it?
I second it.
All right, why are we entering?
Uh, it would be.
Who's off, Lee for Dwayne?
It'd have to do with, have to do with some, whatever Jim's up there for. Right away acquisition.
We are.
Yes.